Took my tape out of my pants?
No, it did not. Do you need pants?
Do not need pants.
Perfect.
Out here is the key in there?
Yeah, it's in the glove box.
Come on, Stephen.
Marshall gets in the limo.
How many people fit in the limo?
Six.
I'm gonna leave my...
Hi, Steve.
Wait, we can't, we can't, we can't live without Buford though, he's gonna have to get in the limo.
No, I think James, you should go ahead, sir. Um, because you're the man of the hour. And you have one minute.
Okay, let's go. Yeah, well, let's go. Um, and if you guys don't, yeah.
I'll send an email.
We'll be behind you as soon as possible.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Alright, see you there.
See, be safe. Don't, don't let the mayor go toppling off that car. Put your safety belt on, Mr. Mayor.
I got it on, I got it on.
Illegal parking, illegal parking.
Yo, Zach, right now I need to know, you got a bomb on you?
A bomb? Uh, bulletproof.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're standing awfully away from the crowd right here, like, uh, I don't know, man.
If I had a bomb, if, if I had a bomb, wouldn't that be a good thing?
Uh, yes and no.
Is that Mr. Bean?
No, brother, it's a, it's a bulletproof.
I don't think there's any fucking, oh, there it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here with the Kentucky Free Press. Do you, do you have my press credentials for me?
Um, I can get those for you.
Mr. Mayor, how's it going, everybody?
Can I speak with you for just a second outside, before we get started?
Happy birthday.
Uh, we can cut talk over here, sure.
Awesome.
Oh.
Hey, Joy.
Hi.
Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Hello, everybody.
So, what do you, so what do you give this man some pants?
Gotcha.
He could borrow my leg warmers if he needs them.
I don't want your leg warmers.
Fuck you too, I guess.
Hey, that man is free, let him be, let him be.
He really liked those pants, okay, yeah, he's, he's real hurt to the guy taking, that's all.
Okay, guys, to get this started, because it might be a long time, let's just jump right into it with not a lot of explanation on what's going on. Basically, I wanted all the citizens to come together, and you're all going to get five minutes of uninterrupted, um, talk. You can talk about anything you want, from a pebble, to the clouds, to anything you want. The idea is that you're going to talk, and everyone's going to have a chance to hear what you talk about. Um, we are looking for council members as well, so if you want to be a council member, this is the time to discuss, um, wha- what you want to be a council member of. We currently have myself, and we currently have Deputy Rudolph that, uh, does the Sheriff Department, and we are looking for more. Um, if you want to speak, I would suggest that we line up in a nice lineup right here, down the middle. And when you come up and you have your five minutes and you're talking, nobody will interrupt you. Um, again, this is just so you can talk about whatever you want, and as a group together, everyone gets to hear, and hopefully at the end, if you have some concerns, you have some needs, you have something, the entire city is here to either collaborate with you, point you in the right direction, help you. Maybe you have a resource that you don't know how to get, or you need a supplier, you got a complaint about the city, this is your time. And if you want to go first, I suggest you walk up and you stand on the stage right here, so everyone knows it's your turn to talk, and nobody else will come on the stage. And then, I have one announcement, yeah, actually, that's perfect. I have one announcement that I need to make, and that there's a new sheriff in town. If you got, if you guys haven't met the new sheriff, he comes highly recommended. I will let him have the first five minutes, and he can speak to you, or he can take thirty seconds, whatever he wants. Go ahead, Jake.
Can I, can I just get a photo of you, Sheriff?
Yeah, sure.
Hold, hold it, hold it, that, say cheese.
Cheddar.
Perfect, thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, uh, I'm Sheriff Jake Mueller. Uh, my door is always open. If you guys have any complaints, if you guys have any issues, feel free to bring them to me. Um, other than that, uh, it's a pleasure to be working here, and I hope to, 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 you know, stave off some of the crime that's been happening.
Perfect. Thanks, Jake. Welcome to the city, uh, not welcome to the city, but welcome, you've been here for a while, but welcome to, uh, the department. Who wants to go first? Who's the brave soul that's gonna go first? Please step up. Are you going first?
Yeah, Lin and he's up there, there you go.
Oh, perfect, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, Lin and he.
Howdy, Lin and he. Jones.
Well, hello there.
Here, here.
God, they're corrupt.
I guess I should read this, you know?
Boo.
Marshall, you should have your camera for this, this is breaking news.
I, I got it, I got, I got it, that's, that's right here, Roy, look, that's right here.
Oh, that little, that little thing?
Yeah.
How the hell do they fit it all in there?
They better not be.
Jim, Jim said I'm, I'm not allowed to record.
What do they do to their personnel?
Yep. Yep, Chuck, Chuck can take your, some of your five minutes, that's for sure. Chuck, you can still have your five minutes if you wanted after. Go ahead, Chuck.
Uh, yeah, sure, thank, thank you very much. Um, I, I've come up to the stand today to talk about the big logging corporations run illegally and legally at the same time. Almost in between the lines, they've devastated forests, they've overlogged, and they continue to leave logs on the ground and twigs on the ground for random passerby's to just see the devastation that they have left behind. I've come here today to try to put an end to this, bring some awareness. They've destroyed my home. I'm a homeless man, I live in the woods, people. And I came back to my woods, and there is no woods left.
Ah, that's terrible.
I've tried replanting the trees, I've spent over a thousand dollars on seeds and water and fertilizer, and not a single tree is not even past the sapling stage yet, and it's been two days, two whole days.
He's a saint, he's a saint, I say.
But I, I bring these concerns to the people, to try to stop big logging companies for overlogging, taking too much, too much greed on just one specific material. I feel it is too much for the environment. Mother Nature cannot handle this much longer. You see all the litter that is being left around in the streets. Who do you think's been picking that up this whole time? The homeless, us.
And the park rangers too.
Yes, and the park rangers. The park rangers have been doing a very great job.
Thirty-second warning.
Alright, and I just want to wrap this up, I also think that there should be a little bit more stricter gun laws, and also, uh, like, you can't be openly wearing plate carriers as a normal civilian out in public without it being concealed. That's my time, thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, thank you so much. Who's up next, guys? Who's up next?
I think, I have one more thing to say, though.
Perfect. You'll be running for council, what? Do you have a particular, do you, wait, do you have a particular branch of council, or business, or civics? Or... Perfect, got it. Whoever's next, come on up, it's first come, first served, no pushing, though.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zach, and, uh, I'm actually here to go a little bit against what was just said. Um, I do believe that the logging company should be able to stay and practice, but I do believe that what should be changed is the malnourished practice of it. There is a lot of people out here doing illegal logging, which I do fully agree, we should protect our, our land and only be logging in the specif- specified logging areas where it's can be controlled, per se, because I don't think it's...
This, this person is trying to interrupt their time with meditation. I can hardly hear what he's saying.
Yeah, if we could hold meditation to after, if you'd, if you'd appreciate it, guys, it is very, it's very loud for some people. It's very, thank you, we appreciate, we appreciate it. Nobody is anti-meditation, just to be clear, just to be clear, no one's anti-meditation.
Feel free to meditate on your own time in the privacy of your own home.
Go ahead, Zach, go. Go ahead, Zach, go ahead, Zach, sorry for the interruption.
What I was trying to say is, I think that it should be a more controlled practice. Uh, as my, my team, we have been logging in a certain area where nobody tends to go. It has been approved by the city, and nobody has came up there and not once have, and it has anyone complained. I think that the practice just needs to be controlled and put into a certain area, and that's what we've been doing, and I think the government is doing the right thing and has the right practices, I just do not believe that they're being enforced correctly. And I think that we should crack down more so on the illegal loggers, more than just saying in general, "all loggers." And second of all, I would like to move on to the second, uh, thing that was brought up. The practice of wearing body armor and being able to have firearms, this is America. Nobody can take our arms, nobody can take the fact that we are trying to protect ourselves. As long as we are protecting ourselves and not harming others, then that's how it should be. You cannot take that right away from us. And I will openly say that in ti- in front of everyone here.
Now, as your sheriff, I fully support the Second Amendment.
Alright, I think I am done saying what I have to say. If you, uh, if you stand with me, you stand with me, if you stand against me, you stand against me, it is what it is. Uh, I respect every one of you here, thank you.
Appreciate that, now, that's why we're here, to hear everybody's voices. Whoever's up next, get your butt up here, come on up. It's a roller coaster, one after the other, one after the other.
Let him get it, pops.
Let me know when the, the time starts.
Your time starts the second you say your first word.
Alright, howdy, my name is Roy McCoy III, I've just moved here to this town. Uh, I've, I brought a very serious topic to discuss tonight in this open forum. I'd like to discuss the mind control that the government is doing to its citizens here with lead and fluoride they're putting in the water, it is not safe to drink, stop drinking the water. Yep, mind control, yep, yep, they're, you wonder why people are doing all this stuff around town and acting crazy at the government and the water. Yes, it's real, trust me, MKUltra, it's real, don't you even question it. Alright, I'm moving on to my next topic now. Yeah, who's doing all this mind control in the government, it's the lizard fucking people. They're out there, you believe me? You gotta believe me, because I've seen them with my own eyes. They're out there and they're plotting against us. I, I, thank you, thank you. Yep, they're, they've infiltrated the government, I don't know if any of these here people behind me are, uh, are lizard folk, I can't make any claims in that way, I'm keeping an eye on them regardless.
They're both normal.
Well, that's how they appear, uh, you know, that's how they appear until they're back in their home underneath the earth, the earth's crust, you know? But anyway, I would just like to request that all civilians keep their eyes on the law enforcement and government, uh, officials such as the mayor, make sure that they are not a lizard. They're shedding their skin, you see their eyes blinking sideways, you see a forked tongue. Come on down and, uh, tell Roy about it, I'm keeping, uh, keeping tabs on them, uh. Make sure you drink your Diet Pepsi and smoke your cigarettes, Gold Label's the best, uh, I think, uh, that's about it. Oh, and the aliens, don't forget about the aliens, they're out there, they stole my Juniper, that's my dog, they stole it.
They stole my pants.
They stole his, what, the aliens got your pants, Mars, god damn it! Shit, alright, that's my time.
Thanks, Roy, it's all...
Roy, the bridge.
The bridge? No, that ain't part of my thing, yeah, Buford's out there.
Thanks, Roy, appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
As always, as always, very insightful. Um, who's next? Come on up, come on up.
Uh, hello, everybody, is this working? Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, okay, hi, everybody, my name's, uh, Buford Burley, I'm here today as a private citizen, uh, as a park ranger to raise a couple of issues. One of them was just mentioned, I live to the east of town across a small bridge over the river. This bridge is highly dangerous and very narrow, there's been several accidents already, people could be injured, it costs money for the EMS to do rescues, but jaws of life ain't cheap. I'm putting forward a motion that the city should widen the bridge for the personal safety of the citizens in the area, and definitely not related to the fact that I totaled two cars there already, and I can't afford a third. Okay, the next thing I'd like to, to, uh, approach is the, the forestry issue, I agree with the sentiments, uh, that the gentleman made. I am a ranger, and we have been working to, uh, enforce more of the logging regulations. I'm gonna be on top of that from now on, and I implore you as citizens, if you can, if you see somebody logging outside of the area, let us know, okay? Either give them some advice about where to go, maybe, or let a ranger know or police, and we'll come take care of it. Don't, don't try to, uh, you know, interact with them directly yourself, they can be violent, big logging is no joke. Um, at last, I, what was the last thing I was gonna bring up? Oh, about weapons, uh, recently, we've opened a couple of new gun stores in town, and I completely agree in the Second Amendment, you're right. But we need to have a crackdown on unregistered weapons without serial numbers. There's gonna be a zero tolerance policy for improperly registered weapons, uh, regardless of the Second Amendment. They need to be properly registered, there's been a lot of shootings in town, and we're gonna try to crack down on that. So again, if you see someone carrying an illegal weapon, please let a police officer know, these are the, these are the guns that unfortunately end up being involved in crime. And I'd also like to say I support the motion that body armor and face masks shouldn't be allowed in town. Uh, we have enough trouble identifying people, I mean, it's not like their name's floating over their head all the time or something. So if we can't see your face, we can't identify who you are, and, uh, that's important for everybody's safety. Thank you so much, that's it, have a good day, folks. Oh, one more thing. Uh, totally shameless promotion of, uh, target.
Thirty-second warning.
It's, uh, it's got a shooting range, ammo, and weapons accessories, tomorrow we're having a grand reopening. Weapons are gonna be available, fishing, hunting licenses, gun licenses as well. Come on out, shoot at the range, have a couple snacks on us, we hope to see you there, thanks, have a good day.
Well said, Buford, thank you so much, sir. Who's up next? Come on up to the podium, just walk up, first one up there gets to talk. Hello?
Howdy. Hi, Lynn.
Hi. Are you smoking? Is there no smoking in here? Don't think you can smoke.
Do you think this is the eighties, you can't smoke inside a government building?
Marshall, it's the nineties, man, it's hard.
I need to smoke too, Marshall, hold on.
Right, I... I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with this.
Oh, I love that idea, plant trees. Plant more trees.
No problem, we'll have to have a discussion on it later when...
I'm getting old, I can't stop.
As a major logger, I could support that, I could support that idea, we wouldn't mind planting behind us.
Here, here, I agree.
Alright, I'm gonna hit that.
I would even be willing to pay my guys more to be able to do it, if need be.
Hold your cue and cancel.
Can you just escape from this kind of situation?
Hey, sir, I'm gonna ask for you to put the, put the axe away.
You could ask all you want. Steven, put the axe away.
I, I'm doing it, relax, relax.
I don't like you holding the axe either.
Steven, that's my fellow counselor. What up, Sam?
Do you see anybody else here with a, with a weapon?
I'm holding it. I think, uh, Steven, it just looks a little strange in her eyes, I'm putting it away again.
Yeah, Steven, it looks like you're doing some sort of ninja too.
Oh. I didn't even know that.
Know what?
Thought they were just for our town. We have a contract with them that all the logs must be used in our community.
Okay, so I'm taking a court soon for breach of contract.
There was a logging shortage for that housing project, they're selling the logs to someone else.
A bridge expansion, yes.
I, I, I don't dabble in politics, you know that.
Mayor, I might be the only one out here actually log- logging correctly, properly.
Sounds like it, I'd like to look into this a bit more. Council, everything's your problem.
Just today, I hurt my leg on that bridge, it's a danger to us all.
Second.
Where are your pants? They were stolen.
Thank you so much, Lynn, not Lim, appreciate it, appreciate, appreciate it. Who's up next? Get your butt up here. Alright, refocus, people, refocus.
No meditating, you're in the meeting.
Don't meditate, don't meditate. The meditating. Quit meditating.
The meditating section is across the street, it's so loud.
Do you want me to have like a book or something I can read?
Do it outside at least. Is it discrimination, or is it just like common courtesy?
You do have rights, sir, I'm sorry, actually, we, we, we're doing, we're asking you, uh, for everyone's consideration, if you could just take a quick break.
We'll look into it, just like I said, so we can get it on pen to paper.
Alright, boss, thank you.
Sorry, officer.
Yeah, can we stop the meditating, please, so that someone else can go, "I appreciate what you're doing, and I understand it, it might not be the appropriate time for it, though." Okay, everybody, refocus, here we go, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Good evening, uh, residents of West Point or West End or whatever this town is called, I completely forgot. Um, I would like to announce that, thank you, West Point, um, I would like to announce that soon we will have a video store. So, the days of...
Hell, yes.
And all of our favorite programs will be long behind us. That's it.
Thank you so much. Look at that young entrepreneur right there, guys, quick little ad in and out. You should name it Blockbuster. Whoever's up next, let's go.
I think that's a great idea, actually.
It's something you watch on the TV, just like that game we played, Roy.
Roy, I showed you how the camera worked, we took a video and then put the tape in, that's the video.
Next person is up, hush, 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 hush.
Alright, guys, let's be quiet.
Hello, everyone, my name is Calisto, and I'm here today to discuss about the main issue about our community right now. You see, I've been walking, and I'm a man of, uh, prayer and word, but I've noticed not many people are subscribed to the Church of Twitch Prime. Now, I'd kindly ask you to subscribe, yes. We have a church, now, you see, it's very important that you get to the Church of Twitch Prime, we need, we need as much donation as we can get to keep it running. It's a very huge cataclysmic issue. You see, you join the church by simply mugging the man next to you, it's a really simple concept.
That's not how churches work.
That's, yeah, that's, that's a...
It's not church, church, it's called the reverse mugging, you give them shit, not take shit.
Oh, wait, what?
Anybody wanna adopt that?
Well, I would like to say...
Maybe you should have listened to that.
Something to the feller next to ya?
Now...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have to ask you, this is a reverse robbery, you're gonna have to take these, this is your issue now.
Oh, we got you.
What did he give you, mayor?
It's yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome, enjoy.
As you can see, this man clearly is welcoming to the idea of the Church of Twitch Prime. Now, if you'd like to join me on the honors of Church of Twitch Prime, uh, be, be a kind man and donate to, uh, people in need.
Alright, I think I, I think I'll give a donation here, I think, I think it's, I think it's, uh, I think it's worth it.
Oh, wow, that's so thoughtful.
They don't fit me.
Alright, thank you so much, thank you so much, whoever's up next, get up, you're first come, first served. Alright.
Alright, just to touch on a couple of topics, I heard something about, uh, more places for cheaper rent. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the trailer park to the southeast has been purchased by, um, a decent benefactor, and has put the rents on those pretty cheap. So there is some new cheaper, uh, places to rent. Uh, secondly, I definitely support the, yes, I definitely support the widening of that bridge to the east, it is way too narrow. I don't know how many times I stop before I even try to cross it to make sure I'm not gonna hit the rail.
Mr. Mayor, could I have one more word to say up here in just a second?
Um, and then lastly, I would like to bring, um, a topic to concern regarding legal marijuana. The states of California and Colorado are already discussing this for medical uses in their states, and I think Kentucky should get ahead of, or, we should get ahead of the game and get that passed.
Okay, okay.
Our governor is currently sitting here in one of the rows near the back, and I think we should all have a chance to chat with him later today, and encourage him to put that through as a law with our legislature, so we can be the first state to legalize medical marijuana.
I support that decision.
It's a plant for that.
Thank you so much. Whoever's up next, get your butt up here, let's keep this ball rolling. Hush, hush up, hush up.
You don't have to have pants to stand on the stage?
Nope. My pants were stolen.
I'll get to that. That was him. My name's Marshall Teller, I'm a reporter with the Kentucky Free Press. I like to talk to everyone about conspiracy theories, I've been back in town for just over a week now, and all the chatter I hear from everyone is conspiracy this, conspiracy that, it's rampant. You guys are losing your minds over things that may or not be happening, and there is certainly no evidence for.
Ain't a conspiracy if it's real.
I have, I have video of people with horns and deer skulls driving around town, shooting at people in their cars. I have video proof.
Ma- ma- ma'am, James, can, can you add that to my time that they're interrupting?
Yes, this is Marshall time, guys, you can discuss after openly, and you guys can discuss that stuff after. With the people that came up here and talk, everything that they've talked about, feel free to find them and talk about it after. Go ahead, Marshall, I've put your three seconds back on your clock.
Conspiracy theories, item one. Conspiracy theories. Item one, Park Ranger Buford had sexual relations with a quad bike to make babies with strange names. Now, despite strange behavior from a lot of our law enforcement, this situation is highly statistically unlikely, even if he looks like the type you might. Item two.
Bring it down, come on. Just keep talking, Marshall, just keep talking.
Item two, the mayor was attacked by a group of soul called cultists known as the Unforgiven. Do you people really believe that these antler-wearing freaks possess magical powers? As far as I can tell, they don't even know how to turn on a TV, let alone detonate a bomb. Item three, Jake, the owner of the pharmacy, has been holding out on the good stuff because he's feeding it to the ducks to create a species of super James James to mayor in a tightly contested election where half of us don't accept the result. These are just a taste of the madness I've seen spewing from your minds and out of your mouths, and I'm deeply concerned about this trend continuing. Personally, I'd like to know that my mayor, my representation in government railed against those conspiracy theorists that say refutable garbage like Santa doesn't exist. I can't remember the last time I saw a bird in the sky, but if I saw one of those grim feathery creatures flapping their graceless wings at me from on high, would my mayor have the courage to look at it in the beak and say it wasn't real? You'd think so, but last week he fed me some magic mushrooms that led me to see birds everywhere. Now, I'm a, look, I'm a respected journalist who relies on their words being trusted, okay? I'm also dedicated to my profession, but in my adulthood state, I'd sold newspapers to those birds. Bunch of happy customers flapping their wings in approval at the delivery of some hard-hitting news. Of course, it wasn't real, so why did Mayor James James want me to think that it was? Now, there's been a lot said about the contents of our water. The gentleman who just spoke about fluoride in the water made a compelling speech that would have you, if you were not the smart and engaged citizen that I know you can be, believe that Diet Pepsi is a saver of humanity from lizard people. However, to do so is a form of distraction. To make you look the other way
Thirty-second warning.
Are you blaspheming, my brother?
I implore the city to appoint a permanent member to the council entitled with the specific mission of ensuring informed citizenry that does not get distracted by matters that need not be addressed. Once established, we can focus our attention on the matters that truly affect the people that sit, people of West Point. Like the threat of extraterrestrial beings that have come from above to abduct your loved ones, beat them up and probe them, steal their dogs and their pants, and leave them wandering cold and alone. In a universe where your pantless legs are left frozen, ting-tingly and alienated, call upon all three free-thinking citizens to reject this future.
Take thirty seconds of my time after Marshall up there. I want everyone to know that it's under investigation and this is allegedly. Marshall Teller stole some classified documents off my desk yesterday and put it on eBay. So just anything that he says, just remember what type of man you're taking information from. Whoever's up next, whoever's up next, come on up. Go ahead, Sam.
Alright, uh, hello, everyone. Many of you may know me as the owner of Silver Clothing, the clothing store just up the road from here, but, uh,
I love your clothes.
Thank you. My name is Samuel, Sam for short, if you prefer that. I wanna run for city council because I believe that I can make a positive difference in our community. Uh, I have lived in the city since first moved here, right, and have seen its potential and its challenges. I have witnessed the growth and development of our economy, our infrastructure, our culture and our diversity. I have also seen problems and issues that we face, such as crimes, crime, drugs, but I'd prefer to speak on behalf of our citizens. Their needs, their relations, their skills, it all matters. Uh, I'm not here to criticize the current administration or to make unrealistic promises. I'm here to offer you a realistic and achievable plan to address the needs and concerns of our citizens. I have the passion to serve you and to represent you in the city council. Uh, I'm running for city council because I care about the city and its people. Thank you for letting me speak. Enjoy your night.
Thank you so much. A+. Whoever's up next, get your butt up here.
Hello y'all, my name is Alexander Turner. You can call me Alex for short. Um, I work on roads, so I repair, uh, parking lots, roads, uh, gravel roads and stuff. And something that I've noticed is I haven't had much materials lately. Uh, I think that the government or the mayor should increase funding towards roads to make this city look clean. I've been working, uh, cleaning up trash still and fixing roads all over town and, um, still without the proper materials to do much else. Um, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you so much. Noted. Whoever's up next, get your butt up here.
Okay. Hello, people of West Point. My name is Johann Roth and I am the founder of the most prestigious law firm in West Point. I originally came from the west coast, from, uh, Oregon, Washington State. Uh, and I had a law firm in Seattle and I had a law firm also in Oregon. Holy shit. However, I would like to say that my efforts are going to be focused here on West Point because the people need a strong defense, one who really cares about them. So, uh, if you're having legal troubles or maybe you just need advice about whether, uh, to or not to do something, then come on down to the Roth and Co. Law Firm. We recently just renamed because, as someone just asked, I am now partnering with Roman Fitz and Jose O'Rey. And we are making a mega law firm who will take on clients from everyone in town. Now, that is roughly all that I had to say, but I have one last statement. I love women. Thank you, West Point.
Thank you so much. Look at another young entrepreneur with his business. Perfect. Whoever's up, whoever's up next, get your butt up here.
Amazing.
Hello, everybody. Many of you might know me. Um, I'm Captain, Captain Rudolph with the, with the sheriff's department. Um, I'm also a civil worker. I work on the roads and on my, on my free time. Um, and I, I, I came up here to talk about funding for, for the sheriff's department. Um, as of late, uh, we, we have had lack of funding and, uh, trouble paying the, uh, the, uh, the deputies and our contracts. And, uh, I, I had one of the deputies, I'm gonna remain unnamed, come up to me and, uh, say that they might be going on strike soon. So, um, i- it's, yeah. On top of that, uh, I, I know that sounds really bad, but, uh, we're, we're looking for more deputies. So, uh, if anybody is interested, now would be the time, um, we got, you know, very well benefi- very good benefits, uh, would recommend. That's all.
Thank you very much. And, uh, So everyone is aware, uh, Rudolph is part of the council as well. He is a sitting member of the council. Whoever's up next, get your butt up here.
Sorry, just to interrupt, I've actually seen two emergency budgets pass across state, uh, tables for the sheriff's department. So I don't understand the lack of funds. They've received two emergency fundings.
I think we'll let the, we'll, we can discuss that with the sheriff and, uh, with the council, I think, and make sure that that, uh, has been taken care of going forward, I think. What do we think? Alright, here we go. Next person is up. Yeah, except we're not responding to topics. We're just hearing the topics and discussing them afterwards to keep, uh, to get all of the ideas flowing. We talked to everybody. We talked to everybody, whatever thing they brought up, we'd be here for a day. But yes, what you're saying is, it will be talked about. Sorry to interrupt you, Thor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. How's everything?
He's avoiding telling us what got shot off.
It's his private business.
It's probably his, it's probably his private picture, right?
Thank you so much. Alright, who's up next? Anybody else? Is this your time to speak, guys? I see some maybe out there. Absolutely, Joy, absolutely.
Alright, um, I, I, I'm here to implore everyone to not throw their trash in the streets because it's making our town pretty hideous to see so much trash around. I'm anemic, so I myself can't pick up glass without cutting my fucking finger half off and bleeding all over the goddamn sidewalk. It already happened once. I had to go to the hospital. So please pick up your trash and also reduce, reuse and recycle for the environment. Thank you, bye.
Thanks, Joy. Thanks, Joy. Is anybody else? Here's your, here's your opportunity. If you're shy, that's fine. Alright, well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the meeting. Thank you so much! Thank you, thank you. This, this, this is your, this is your city, not my city. Just remember that, folks. I'm glad you all came out here.
Everybody get down! Stay in this room. I'll lock the door. Stay in this
I need help over here, I need help over here.
He's down. He's down, he's down. I need help.
I'm, I'm
I'm ready, I'm ready. Come here, come here, come here, come here, come here. Come here, get in, get in, get in, get in, get in.
I need medical.
Get in.
Everybody, if you're a civilian, back inside of the, the meeting hall right now.
Test, test. Yes, get, get back in the town hall.
I don't, I don't have anything to help you.
Mayor!
Barrington, cover the fucking door.
Two bullets in me.
Only two?
Yeah, only two. One's in my head.
I got a Band-Aid on it, I got a Band-Aid on it.
If you're not here to I can't, I'm
Everyone relax, everyone relax, everyone relax. Triage, triage, triage. It's, it's fine.
Are you part of EMS?
You're good?
No, I, I
I called it too. I was discussing with, I was discussing with Alinity earlier. I was like, someone's gonna do something here, like throw a bomb or something.
Hey.
Yep.
You, you as well, unless
Steven, Steven, I got shot in the exact same spot I got shot yesterday. I'm losing, I'm losing life, guys. I'm losing life. Nope, no, that's why it's there. It's emergency, it's emergency. Okay, you have to be quick, you understand? Okay, okay, we need, is there, is, is, is there a doctor? I will bleed out, I will bleed out. I have two bullet wounds in my head. Yeah, I'm just letting you know, I have two bullet wounds in my head. One from yesterday, one from today. If there's a doctor, I need a doctor upstairs, guys. I need a doctor upstairs. I have two bullets in my head. Can someone check on the sheriff, please? Someone check on the sheriff, please?
Um, uh, I've been stitched up, I'm just
Okay, okay. Appreciate it, Steven, I appreciate it.
May all my deputies secure the building, please.
Where, where's Deputy Barrington?
Yeah, I put a bunch of medical supplies in my store.
I need, uh, to block these doors, please. Get this building secure.
I need medical. Buford, I need medical.
God damn, I knew this would happen too.
Can I, can I get some help here?
Can I get somebody down here to help Captain Rudolph when you got a minute?
Rudolph needs, Rudolph needs helps, guys. I put all my medical stuff in there too.
Alcohol, ribs, sterilized suturing needles.
Yeah, if you can find May, can you drag May up here, please? Yeah, I need May up here.
Okay, uh, I'll see if I can find him.
Her, her, her. She's got an accent, she talks like this. No, it's fine, she talks like this. She's, she's my personal doctor.
We need May. Like, now. Yeah, 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 I can, I can.
I don't get paid enough for this job.
Yes, sir. Sam's good, he's gonna protect me.
Once, once the mayor's been stabilized, we get somebody down here to
Mayor seems stabilized for now.
Unstable for now. Thank you so much, thank you so much.
I can try and do it quickly, mayor, but I don't think I can do it.
Yeah, that's why we, we need
I mean, this motherfucker got shot thirty times, so
Alright, Samuel, hear me out. Uh, I take the Band-Aid off, you pull the bullet out, I fix him up, or I throw it back on the Band-Aid.
Uh, if he agrees to it, I don't think I can pull the bullet out if I don't, do I have anything to pull it out?
There's, you need tweezers. I don't have tweezers now that I think about it. No, I've got everything but tweezers. We need tweezers in the mayor's office, please. Tweezers to the mayor's office.
I know where to get some, really quickly.
Go for it, go for it. It's better than, it's better than
Alright, alright, alright. Stay, uh, Kalisto, stay here with the mayor. I'll be right back with
Sure, you're gonna be okay.
Thank you. Oh my god. There should be thread in the suturing needle. Or the suturing thing. It should come with thread. I agree, I agree 100%. I didn't tell you, you couldn't go up there. No, I got- I'm, I'm on my office floor dying, Buford.
Joy, Joy, we need you in the mayor's office, if you can hear me, Joy, we need you in the mayor's office.
Who, is there an officer here?
Yeah, I got it.
Sheriff, can you step away from me for just a moment so someone else can help as well? Stay within range to help, but you are blocking, uh, me from helping as well.
Can one of you guys stay with this man and make sure he doesn't pass out?
I'll stay.
Oh, I was going to offer to drive you to the car.
Oh shit, okay, let's go.
Marge, you're doing alright.
I just shot the head wrong.
Just walk, Joy, just walk.
Don't yell at me, Buford, I'm doing my best.
I'm not trying to yell, sorry.
Look, I'm clumsy, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have bullets in my head, two of them.
I got some medical supplies, I didn't find a scalpel or anything.
Oh god, oh god. Oh, thank you, guys.
Hey, Deputy Thorn, I'm gonna secure the outside here, okay?
Oh my goodness.
Should be fine.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, I'm feeling a little-
Yes? Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I need you at the door.
Yeah, Mayor's fine now.
Alright, go ahead and secure the, uh, front door and keep an eye out, if you see anything that looks weird, let me know, don't let anyone else in this room.
Oh my god, I'm gonna pass out for like thirty seconds to forty-five seconds here.
F1 Jake. I also have the keys. Escape now, and then you can, uh, yeah.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make sure you stay safe in here, alright?
Yo, who needs help, who needs help?
Inside of the town, inside of the meeting hall, inside of the meeting hall, please.
Hey, Stefan. Alright, you are armed, I was just making sure.
Alright, one second, I'm gonna put his clothes back on him, hopefully.
Yeah. Alright, May, are you good?
Samuel, what are you still doing here?
Samuel, Samuel- Samuel's on guard for me, Sam, he's hurt for me.
I'm also locking up the place, cause I got the keys to this place.
Steven. Steven, did you see who that was? Was he, was he dressed familiar, Steve?
Deputy Thorn, they want everybody cleared out this, this area.
Got it. Why don't we tell everybody that the mayor has left the building, but I'll be over here. Just tell everybody I've left. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Officer Jake, I'm gonna hold, hold him with you. I gotta go check on Mr. Mayor here in just a second.
Can I get out?
Yep, I can let you out, Joy, one sec.
Steven. I am up the floor. I'm in the bathroom.
I'm gonna go check on the mayor real quick.
I'll watch this prisoner if he needs to go somewhere.
How about now?
Everything good up here, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I probably have to get in and out of, I probably gotta get in and out of a car.
He's, he's upstairs in his office.
Yeah, Zach, come on, but I gotta lock these doors up. Yeah, I gotta get in the car, probably.
Uh, I'm gonna need you to open a door for me.
Captain, Officer Jake, I'm gonna bring my car around front.
Uh, I'm gonna take the mayor to the hospital. Hey, do y'all, do y'all have that, Mayor, do you trust these two?
I just need to get in and out of a car. I need, I need a car unlocked, so I can get in and out of it.
Okay, Mayor, do you trust these men with you?
I trust Steven, alright.
Okay, if you can, if you can get to the hospital.
Steven, how do I look? Okay, perfect, perfect.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you still want me with you or no?
Uh, we're good, I, I should probably go with, I should probably just go with the sheriffs right for now. We have to go to Grandma's house. Thank you very much, man, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for everything you did up there, my friend.
No problem.
I'd be dead if it wasn't for you.
Come talk to me, brother.
Where's Roy, guys? What about Bill? Okay, Will and everybody's good? Okay.
We got some more people coming to the, right, uh, the hospital right now, Marshall's arriving as well, he's been hurt. James, I'm glad you're okay, he was shot, he was shot in the head.
I was shot in the head, same place I was shot yesterday. Yeah, what the fuck, Brad? It's okay, it's probably the only thing that saved my life is that bullet hit the other bullet.
Steven, to make sure no one gets through this door, okay?
Buford, did you see who shot me?
I barely saw a thing, I just saw someone dressed in dark clothing and a spray.
Got it, Steven, I, I need, I need, I need Roy in here too, we need Roy. Yeah. Between me and you, I, I had a clear vision of who he was. Oh my goodness. I got, I got, I got shot in the head, but, uh, it's okay, it's the same place I got shot yesterday. No matter what you see, Thorn, I have a bullet in my head, okay? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Roy? Do you remember that, that, that unfortunate person that, uh, we saw pass away yesterday, uh, on the TV show? Mayor shit? This person was dressed exactly like them.
Uh, he might have, he suffered a wound to the head, uh, it's cut the hole with pressure.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. Hopefully Marshall had his camera on. Well, how's, how is he, by the way?
We got the brain matter back in.
As long as you clog it up. Oh. Oh. Yes, yes, Thorn? Is that, is that Russian or German or Polish?
Do perhaps Russians live among us right now?
Yeah, you do, Doc, I appreciate you.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody just back away so the doc can check him out.
Doc, Doc, before you look at me, I need to be clear, there, there is a bullet in my head, okay, Doc?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, will you remove that with another man? During that time, you should be fine. Put the bullets out of your head and stitched it up and bandaged you, you should be fine now.
Appreciate it, what's, what's my name again?
Oh my god, he forgot his name twice, he forgot both.
Mayor, okay.
Uh, Stefan, uh, I have a mighty concern, I need you to step in privately. Miss May, could you please step out the building or the office temporarily?
Right, I think it's time we start our, uh, private security business.
Steven?
Yes?
Hi.
How you doing?
Hi. Um... Where are we?
We're at the hospital.
Are you okay? Me? Again? Yeah, I'm just- Oh, we gotta make it to the town hall meeting, we're late, guys.
This is gonna be a whole thing.
I like Uno, um- Thanks, do you have any Jell-O?
It's his fault.
Doctor Kalisto, can you speak with us for a minute, and officers, uh, guys, can you play some Uno with James and just, you know, just make sure he's happy right now?
Okay, sure.
Alright, just, uh, I'll, I'll play the mayor-
Hi. Hi! Guys, hi, um- Yes, do you guys got, yes, I, I have to draw four.
Alright, so, the, we-
Hey, Joy? I, I think you gotta take the cards out of the box and put them down and-
I drew a bunch of cards, uh, I didn't mean to draw all the cards.
Oh, I drew one and then, hold on.
Yeah, so I gotta, I have to draw four, apparently.
Wait, did I pick up?
Wait, there, I deal the cards.
I have one card in my pocket.
We gotta turn it over.
You just flip it over, I got a wild-
I got a wild card. What are we doing here, guys?
Oh, uh, we're just getting your head looked at, cause you, you got shot in it.
Did Steven shoot me again? We're doing mayor. Yeah, we're doing mayor shit. How's Marshall? I heard him squealing.
Hasn't been wearing pants all day, but other than that.
Damn it.
He was pretty bold about his assertions that conspiracies aren't real and blah blah.
Yeah, it was the tone that probably got him shot.
I mean, he was a re, he was very aggressive. With his, uh, rebuttal of such, you know-
Play some pool.
Oh, we can play pool when we get home, yeah, sure.
Sweet, okay. Yeah, somebody went up to Louisville and pissed off the Russians by stealing it from their game room.
That would have done that, something that would happen.
Yeah. I think it was Will.
Right here. And no, I did not, uh, I haven't been to Louisville.
Oh, don't go, it's dangerous.
Oh, yeah, apparently.
So, what'd you guys say the first sheriff's day on, day, day on duty was?
What? Did the sheriff get shot? I didn't see what happened.
I don't know, I was upstairs protecting citizens, but with my body. Wait.
I mean, he seemed to, he seemed to make a good impression.
Wait, a little bit's come back to me.
Okay.
Wait. So, so- Till it wasn't, yeah, that's my, that's my first date, it was good until it wasn't. Stop going LARPing would be a good first date, but it wasn't. We go check on Marshall? Yeah, my feet are okay.
Oh no, you got a rip in your yellow pants.
Oh no. Yeah, I went looking for new ones today, I couldn't find any except for them skin tight ones that go up my butt.
That's what I like to wear.
James?
Hi. I wanted to check on the newsman.
Oh, he's, he's, he, he's room's just next to yours down that way, I think, is he not in anymore?
I don't know.
What? What do you mean? None of you are watching here?
Was we supposed to be watching? You told us to watch the mayor!
He feels he's alright, I don't know where he went.
Okay, 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 sorry, I just-
He's okay, he's all checked out.
I think he's still stuck in-
Be careful, Mr. Mayor, you know, you were just shot.
There's some guy outside needs help.
Oh my god, it's been a car accident.
What the hell's going on out there?
Car ex- Car accident.
I did, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all better now.
Marshall?
Oh, that's nice. I'm, I'm worried about the lizard people. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm, I'm fucking stopped! Why are you telling me to slow down?
Cause you just ran someone over, that's why.
Not in my eyes, well-
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, it's all good, it's all good. Oh.
Man, three cops, three cops left me to die.
Roy, pull up the limo right in front and side right now. If we have a second vehicle, we'll get in control of that, we're gonna, we're gonna move out. Alexandria, do you mind, uh, if I could, sir, do you mind just stepping back for a minute, we're just trying to keep the situation under control, for it's got a potentially dangerous deal here, thank you, guys. Oh, you did? Oh, you did? Oh, you do? Okay.
Well, they're coming to the hospital.
I just had someone pull out a bully. I've been changed.
Oh, ma, I'm sorry. Let me get you to the ICU right now here. Come on.
Damn, I was thinking clearly, you know.
Joy, can, can you take this guy down to the, uh, down to the ICU where the rooms were? Joy, if you could, get him down to the rooms.
What am I doing?
Let's go to this gentleman.
Take it into the ICU.
Get him to the ICU and we're gonna get, we're gonna come back in a second. Will, you stick with Joy and you guys use the other car back. We're putting James in the, in the-
Oh, this is another car?
Can you come in the, the mayor's car, the yellow one?
Uh, no. Okay. Wait, wait, um, yeah, the mayor actually has the keys. I gave it to him because I couldn't hear anything. I was static and I'm not-
Oh, is it locked?
James, I need, I need your keys to your car, James.
Wait here for the doctor. Here's the emergency room.
It's out back.
I'll come with you in that. Is that limo full now?
No.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, Steven, you go with-
No, there's two seats. There's two seats. There's two seats in here.
Thorn, get in the limo. Thorn and Steven in the limo. Thorn and Steven in the limo, please.
I think Thorn's in his head right now. Oh, never mind.
Mr. Mayor, you doing good?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. I'm just ducked down here underneath the bulletproof box that they built in here for me.
Alright, very glad you're alright.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it, Zach. You too, my friend.
Alright, Will, I see you here still, but I think you're okay.